Council meeting, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. Go ahead and declare a quorum with the three of us. We are expecting a fourth. She's on her way. Would we like to state the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, welcome everyone. This is my first meeting in the new building. I was remote last time, so I'm pretty excited to be here. We'll go ahead and work through the regular agenda. Brenton, are there any changes to the regular agenda?
We'll need to move tax equalization to later in the agenda because the county was delayed getting down here. I don't know if you just want to put it towards the end of the agenda or where you'd like to go, if you just want to go after between eighteen and nineteen.
My recommendation is just to leave it as it is and just when he gets here, you can turn it over to him.
Okay.
Whenever that is.
So we're awaiting the tax equalization members. We'll go ahead and push that further on down the agenda. I'm looking right now at between ten and eleven, so we'll do like a ten A if that's acceptable. That should give them some time. So with that said, any other changes?
No.
No? Anyone else changes to the regular agenda?
No.
Okay. Can I get a motion on the agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the regular agenda. I'll second that.
All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Let's move on to the consent agenda. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the consent agenda? Yes?
I did. I just have one comment for four E, the resolution to levy special assessments. I'm pretty sure I understand that. I recognize that that's just a formality for us, correct, on those districts to begin the process of, um, of the special assessment committee reviewing. Am I correct?
That is correct. So the city's already had one meeting with the special assessment commission to discuss methodologies for specials. Now is the part where we actually need to get going on some projects that the city has constructed. And those projects are either finalized or in the process of being finalized and so we need to levy those amounts. And so we have prepared resolutions directing the special assessment commission to meet and start the process for levying those assessments.
Okay, I just wanted a clarification. And so that's the only comment I have on consent.
I had a similar question about that, just clarification. I didn't see any additional documents in the packet about it either, so it's just getting the ball rolling on those.
Yep, that's correct. It's saying special assessment commission, it's time to meet. Here's the dollar amounts for the various districts and start the process to, again, create the assessment list and then hold the hearings, certify the list and then obviously provide those to the council for final approval.
Okay, then I have no issue with your consent agenda either.
Okay, great. Looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make the motion.
And a second?
Sure, I'll second, please.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. And moving on to item five, city council meeting minutes from April seventh, two thousand and twenty-five. Has everyone had an opportunity to review the transcript of those minutes?
Yeah.
Yes.
Any concerns?
No.
Okay. All right, then I'm looking for a motion for approval of the city council meeting minutes from April seventh.
Yeah, I can make the motion to approve the city council meeting minutes from April seventh.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries. On to item six, we're waiting some folks from the tax equalization office, again impacted by traffic. So we'll push that down the agenda and move right on to item seven, public comment. We'll go ahead and open public comment to anyone that would like to speak about anything that is not already listed on the agenda. Going once. Please step up to the podium and state your name and address.
What do you need?
My name is Remy and my address is six sixty-seven thirty, Joseph Street. I am one of the resident affected with a high special. So the money's coming to an end and I can't afford that. I thought we were going to talk about it today. So I were wondering what the result or any resolution to what happening.
At this time, I'll defer to Lucas Croker.
Yep, so I can take that. So I'm the city attorney. The city obviously is in the news. There is a lawsuit that was filed against the city. It's my understanding that one of the council members was served today to initiate a lawsuit. So at this time, my recommendation to the council is to not speak to anything with the lawsuit. And we're just going to have to proceed with the standard process when the city gets sued. And so I will continuously update the council as that lawsuit progresses, but at this time, that's all the comments that the city has.
Oh, another, so that mean that we're going to pay the three thousand dollars the end of this month?
I'm not sure. Three thousand dollars for what?
Because my mortgage was two, uh, one thousand, almost two thousand. And then with what happened regarding the special increase in it, it came to three thousand and I can't afford that. That's why I'm asking, so are we going to pay that amount this month on the month end?
I can't speak to your financial arrangement, financial situation on, on when your mortgages due or what payments are due.
So basically we have to wait at the lawsuit over and so that mean I'm, I may lost my home because I can't afford that. I made three thousand a month and then I have to pay three thousand. Where am I going to live on? So I can't afford that. That's the reason I came to this meeting because I've been stressed. I can't sleep because I'm worrying my daughter and I'm not going to get a home. So is there anything going to be in place for us to the lawsuit over because I can't afford that?
I, again, I can't give you an answer as to your financial situation or when you make payments. My job is to represent the city. There's a lawsuit that's pending on this right now. And so that is our, our comment at this time.
I can't, I don't know what to do now.
Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Any others that would like to make public comment during this session? I will be clear that we have been advised not to comment by our legal attorneys. So we are not in a position to have any additional statements at this time regarding that situation. Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead and close public comment and let's move right into the sheriff's update.
Good evening. For those who I've not met directly yet, my name is Joel Stading. I'm a captain of the patrol division. I'm here tonight because your two contact deputies are attending some training that they need to go through. So they will not be here. As far as the monthly report, I talked to Deputy Keller about that. He will probably go over that with the next meeting that he has with you. But if there's any questions or concerns tonight, you can certainly direct them towards me and I will take care of those. So if there's anything, go ahead.
Nice meeting you, sir. Welcome. Welcome. Thank you for coming. Do we have any outstanding items or concerns that we need to address this evening that you're aware of?
I had a resident ask a question and maybe, I don't know, I, maybe I, um, well, it's about children on e-bikes. I don't know if there's a, um, any, uh, one of my kids' friends got pulled over on an e-bike. And I don't know the circumstance, if he was driving out of control or something like that, but his parents were curious about that topic, kids on e-bikes. And if it's, he was pulled over.
Okay, so I missed a little bit of the first part. Was he on a bike path or just on a road or?
I have no idea. Yeah, I'm not really sure, um, the circumstance. I think the parents took away that their kids shouldn't be on an e-bike and that that was the issue.
Okay. Well, what?
An eleven year old.
Okay, we have, these things are popping up all over like crazy, in town, in our parks and stuff like that. We're still having kind of some clarification as to like how things are worded, like no motorized vehicles. We don't even really know if we can consider that a motorized vehicle because it's an electric bike. It doesn't have a motor. So we're kind of looking into that.
Yeah.
But what I can do is I can discuss that with Deputy Keller and Deputy Noonan. And maybe bring some additional information the next time. So they're kind of new, but boy, they're really hitting the, hitting the streets pretty fast this spring, so. But I'll definitely look into that and we'll get back to you on that, so.
We appreciate it. I think it's a great topic. I know I've seen quite a few coming out with the nice weather. And, and I, I personally don't know what the, you know, standards, requirements, protocols are for an e-bike. How old do you have to be? Do you need to be, you know, licensed or permitted to operate one? I don't know any of that, so.
I think I saw two or three of them when I was coming into town today, so.
Excellent.
Just real close, so.
Looking forward to hearing about it next week. Anyone else?
Sarah, really quick, on, on the e-bike conversation, I did discuss it with our deputies last week and the patrol sergeant. There's a lot of different variables at play, such as like age, where they're located, where they, like, Captain. Asked about, uh, were they on a path, on the street? Where the conversation really stemmed at or came down to was age of who's using the bike, e-bike. Are they thirteen or older, I think is what the age was brought up, at least in that conversation.
Yeah, I don't know.
And then, uh, and then the other part was where they located, are they being safe? Because as, as how they'd be looking at it right off the bat, no, it's something I agree they should look at too, a little deeper. Are they motorized or not? If they are motorized, then they need to be, my understanding was treated just like a motor vehicle. So you can't have them on sidewalks or paths. They need to be on the street, which they have to stop at a stop sign and can't zip through it, things like that. So general feedback was just stressing that if anybody is using those, to be safe and conscious and, you know, how they're behaving with those, so they're not being reckless, so. At least that's the general conversation we had, but I think it was, just like you said, digging into it to understand more how it's interpreted.
Yeah, we're still trying to clarify what these things actually are, so.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming down. We'll, uh, we'll reach out if we have anything additional that comes up. But at this time, I think that all the open items were closed in the last meeting. We'll go ahead and move on to agenda item number nine, Southern Valley Fire and Rescue Update. Mr. Mahoney, welcome.
So, real quick, if I can, last meeting, it was brought up, I believe Jeff was the one that brought it up, about inspection fees and all that stuff. I was just as confused as some of the looks I think you, some of you had. That was never brought up in any of the conversations.
What was it?
Last week, or not last week, the meeting prior, Jeff had brought up like inspection fees and stuff like that. That had never been a part of the conversations. What he was, I think, referencing is, and I've had the conversation on and off over the last year with Brenton and Jeff. It's, in layman's terms, it's more like a development impact fee to where, like, the city is the one that has to create this. That's why I brought it up, is I can't do it on my own. But when developments come in and the infrastructure and everything has to change and the demand on all the public services increase, it's actually a pretty popular thing across the country in a lot of areas. There's fees associated with developments and then portions of that break off to fire EMS parks, kind of however it's set up for that system. And I use the ordinance that you have for the parks, just as an example because it's already in there. But it was, it was more of just an example type. Like, some of the conversations with, with them were, you know, you're looking at funding for the future potential for your own police department. These fees would help with that initial startup cost, basically, and then you could roll it in. And then your property taxes and everything that you collect will help with the operational cost and continuation. So that was kind of the fees that we were talking about and kind of kicking back and forth, but those have been on and off conversations. So I just kind of wanted to clarify from what I saw in the last meeting. But, any questions to that? But that's where, that's the road that we were kind of going down with some of the conversations.
Okay, we'll move right into your update. Looks like you've got some nice slides put together for us. Thank you.
Yeah, so from last month to this month, call volume kind of went down, but we were looking at shorter distance. We had eleven calls for service, six of them were EMS, one was unauthorized burn. One of them we got paged and canceled before we, before we left. That was one of those automatic crash notifications. We get those and someone drops their phone and then they decide not to answer when they see a private number.
Ah, yes.
We get dispatched the GPS coordinates and then we get canceled. Couple alarm system activations, fire alarms, and then a carbon monoxide detection system. Turnout times, we're looking at an average of two minutes, getting out the door from the initial page, which is great. It's a drastic improvement from where we were a year and a half ago. With that ninetieth percentile being four minutes and fifty seconds, so really nice to see. So breakdown of the incident counts, you have the operational, so that's our evening and weekends coverage from our volunteer staff. And then we have three during the administrative period and then that crew shift popping on there, you'll see that every now and then. That's when the station is fully staffed on the weekends and evenings. So we had crews in-house of our volunteers. So that next page is just kind of a breakdown of the timeframe for these eleven calls, when we saw them pop up. Five o'clock and nine o'clock were the, were the more popular areas. Comparable to the district, we've had ninety-two, at the time I wrote this, we had ninety-two calls, so sixty percent were from City of Horace. And then our current projections were about three fourteen after today. That went up a little bit. So, uh, some of the updates that we've, uh, have coming up and that we've had, we actually got awarded a grant from the Home Fire Sprinkler Coalition. So we've, we got that. We're building the prop right now for that. And then we have open house, May thirteenth, so we invite everybody. It's just an informational thing, just see what they look like and how they operate. And then we also partnered with the American Heart Association, so we can actually provide CPR and first aid classes to the public. So they'll be rolling around, uh, out on our website and on our calendar to start doing those. And we've actually worked with, um, uh, Annie Gabbert over at Parks, because she does them as well. So we partnered with Safety Camp and all that, so we're kind of looking forward to partnering up for more classes and doing a lot more joint stuff together. And then we, uh, we spent the day, a couple weeks ago, over at the high school for their career fair and there was a ton of, ton of people and a ton of kids. So it was actually pretty awesome to get out of the office and do that for a day. But, yeah, that's all I got for you.
I love it. I, uh, I saw the announcements come out on your webpage regarding the home fire sprinkler classes and the community involvement with the, the Career Center, so pretty excited about that. Congratulations to you for kicking that off. We're, we're thrilled to see our youth get involved.
Yeah, um, one last thing I have, because I'll get in trouble if I don't mention it. We are kicking up wildland season, the controlled burns. We do have the burn permits and everything. Just that way we can keep an eye on who's actually actively burning. The Westside State's already had a lot of incidents. There's two firefighters that were hospitalized recently. So the states, we're, we're taking it very seriously on a lot of these controlled burns, so. Please don't do it on a high weather day or a high danger day. We do update on our website and our building and everything, so we have a lot of reference places to look. And the state forestry website also updates it daily, so.
So let's talk a little bit about that.
Okay.
I was recently on a project in Alabama. I was visiting a site here this last week and a neighboring property was doing a controlled burn. And the control went and took a nap and came back out and the wind had shifted and it ended up jumping our transmission line and getting into our limits of disturbance. So I, I want people to understand what is necessary to do a controlled burn and maybe you can walk us through four or five steps.
Yeah, so, um, the permits, it's, it's pretty easy. I mean, especially when we deal with a lot of the farmers out here that want to burn some of their ditches in their fields. It's more of a notification, so that way we know that the weather and everything is correct for that day. And like, uh, when they fill out their permit, we have staff that look through all the weather that's projected for that, that event. We look at the danger type, we look at the moisture contents. I mean, on our end, we go through a huge list of stuff. For the person that's filling them out, it's, it's giving us their plan on how they, what they plan on burning, how much they plan on burning and then notifying us when they're getting ready to kick it off, once it's approved, and then notifying the dispatch center to let them know that it's, it's there. Yeah, we make it super easy for the person filling it out. We do all the heavy work on our end. And we go out and do a site visit to make sure everything's set up correctly and any other hazards that we may not know. And if it's big enough, sometimes we'll actually send crews out there to kind of help babysit with water sources if they don't have them available. So we, we try to make it as easy as possible, but there are, there are some days, unfortunately, we just can't do it.
Right. High winds can pose problems. I know, I personally have called Southern Valley Fire and Rescue back before they changed their name years ago. And it was as easy as a phone call, right? Just let them know what you're doing and then let them know when you're done. And if you have any difficulty in the way, they're here to support, so thanks for that, Chris.
And even after hours too. We have our, our phone numbers on our website and everything, so even after that eight to five, you can still get ahold of us, so.
Awesome. Appreciate your update. Thank you, sir.
I do have one quick question, Chief Mahoney.
Yeah.
Um, when you say current two thousand and twenty-five projection, the three hundred and fourteen calls.
Yep.
Is that just like an average of like what you're?
So I have a, I have a little mathematical equation that I use just to kind of gauge where we look to be at the end of the year. So, I mean, every time I fill one of those out, it's going to fluctuate. It goes based off our call volume with the current day of the year and kind of where we're seeing from compared to last year.
Okay.
So I'm a very big data's number person, so I have a lot of random charts and sheets in my office.
Okay, well, that was all I had.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Forgive me, I should have asked. You guys are good?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Chris. All right, we'll move into agenda item number ten, proclamation, two thousand and twenty-five frontline worker appreciation month. Brenton?
Mayor Trudeau asks that we have this as a proclamation on the agenda for tonight. Unfortunately, he wasn't able to be here tonight, but, uh, if you'd like, we could, I could just summarize it or would you like me to read the proclamation?
We can go ahead and put this out on our website for folks. Go ahead and summarize it for the evening.
Okay, in summary, it's a frontline worker appreciation month proclamation. For the frontline workers, I'll just read the first paragraph part here, but workers are builders of a community exercising curiosity, compassion, courage, and creativity to provide essential services that ensure the safety, health, and education of our residents. So it's for your healthcare workers, your firefighters, law enforcement, teachers, um, any of those professionals working in the field to help our community and keep it safe and further along, so.
So we have a lot of folks that are first responders, right? The, the numbers that are on here are absolutely staggering. Firefighters alone, uh, they respond to an estimated thirty-six million emergency calls. A lot of those obviously are supported by multiple agencies or vice versa. Law enforcement, obviously EMS personnel, the list goes on and on. You can get forestry and all those people involved, right? But we just want to recognize those folks. We want those folks to realize that they are important to us. I know in our community, we have had need for that on multiple occasions and those people are very special to us. So declaring this month as frontline worker appreciation month is a pretty big deal. And I know that, uh, our mayor, Jeff Trudeau, went ahead and proclaimed the upcoming month of May as frontline worker appreciation month within the city of Horace. And we encourage all of our residents to join in recognizing and honoring the contributions of all of our wonderful healthcare workers, firefighters, law enforcement, EMS, and teachers. Thank you all. Okay, that said, let's go back to the agenda item six, tax, tax equalization. I believe our folks are here now, yes? Not yet? They still haven't arrived?
Not yet.
Okay, then we will move forward into Westdale addition. Jase, please give us a heads up on item number eleven.
All right, council members, so this application tonight is a plat and rezone for Westdale addition. The applicant's requesting to subdivide twenty-six acres into sixty total lots and on top of that has requested to rezone the property from Ag to SR three and Civic. SR three does carry a minimum lot size of ten thousand eight hundred square feet. And however, for developments, they have to average twelve thousand square feet. Westdale, uh, has a minimum lot size of ten thousand eight hundred seventy-five square feet and averages twelve thousand six hundred and twenty-five square feet. The Planning and Zoning Commission did review this one and passed a unanimous vote to recommend approval for the plat and rezone for Westdale addition. One thing I do want to point out, and this relates to public land dedication, is we have a scenario that's a little different than what we're used to. The Park District requested for a total of three hundred and one thousand dollars and some change in cash and lieu and point four two acres in land dedication. The applicant is proposing a private land dedication in this area, specifically this lot twenty-one, to which they are proposing to own, maintain, and construct it with the HOA and then have a public access mechanism over it to allow for public use on that. This would take away from the cash in lieu recommendation. That would put it at two point four nine acres of land dedication if the council were to say a private land dedication would suffice with eighteen thousand dollars and seventy cents for cash in lieu on that. Ordinance does allow for private land dedication. It's not encouraged in ordinance, but it is council decision to take a look at. But that is the one thing that is a little different in this application than what we've seen in some others, so I figured I'd bring that up and that should be probably a point of conversation tonight. The applicant is here as well, if you guys have any questions. And this is a public hearing. Both items can be opened up at the exact same time. So I will stand for any questions you guys may have on this one.
Appreciate that. Before opening the hearings, do we have any questions preliminary?
Uh, I mean, I do. I can reserve a proper public comment, I guess. Um, I, I don't have a preference.
Okay.
My questions are about this kind of unique situation with the private land dedication.
Most of them might probably center around that too. I, go ahead.
Good evening, uh, members of the council.
Yeah, I'd like to open the public hearing for both the rezon ordinance and the plat. We'll go ahead and do that. Thank you.
I'll start. Good evening, Chris Mack, representing, uh, the West Twenty-Six Development or owners. And I want to hand out kind of what, the biggest question is going to be this park land dedication. We've been back and forth with them and, uh, kind of want to point out a couple things.
Is there a park board representative here?
I think the recommendation letter's in the packet, right, Jase?
Yes.
So, what I handed out.
You got it, okay.
I'm sorry, Chris. I'm sorry. I just, it's on page forty-nine.
So I guess if you look at page two, so this is River's Edge Master Plan. And this is what the Park District was working with the developer of, of River's Edge Second, uh, Master Plan. And if you look, kind of the Peach area is the area that we're developing with this development. They included that, which they didn't have any control of that land. And what, what they did when they did River's Edge, they did pretty much all of the land dedication that would be in this section. And then they figured, well, we just want cash and lieu on everything. Well, if you look, the Peach area, they don't have any public land dedication on that. Well, they didn't have control of that. So I guess if you look at the first page, what we're proposing with this private park, it would be a non-street running park that would connect into, um, the kind of lineal or the, uh, the non-street running parks that River's Edge is already proposing, would tie in on the southwest corner of our subdivision. And then it would go to the north. And then I just have a future regional park because eventually that area to the north of Seventy-Six will be developed. And it could connect to that future regional park. And, um, we tried working with different options with the Park District, several different options. If you look into the other sheets that I provided, like option one, kind of shows what we're proposing now. And then I did option two where it's a narrower park and we kind of would be kind of in the middle between the three hundred thousand. And, uh, they just didn't, they don't want to ma- maintain it. And then option three is the option that they ultimately want. And that's what their recommendation is asking for. And I guess what we're asking for would be to approve what we are proposing and have a non-street running lineal park that we would maintain, we would construct, we would pay to put the pass in, put the, uh... Um that we would maintain, we would construct, we would pay to put the, the pass in, put the uh the uh if we do benches or whatever other amenities um we deem necessary or that would benefit the public. We could put those in that park. And then um we would do a public uh easement like Jase mentioned. So, if you have any questions.
Are there any plans to delineate that park from the actual residential property lines?
Guess what do you mean?
Is there some sort of separation?
Like a buffer or something?
A fence, something?
If the residents want to do a fence, yeah, they could do a fence on their backyard, I guess.
The reason I ask is because you've got people that will use that for connectivity, in essence, walking through people's backyards.
Yep. And that would be um, they would do their own fence um if they wanted that. Um I guess the plan, I mean, that's something we can discuss to put that in the, in the project where it would be a fence. Um and we would do, do a fence. Kind, it wouldn't be as big, but kind of like what we did in Osgood, there's that fence buffering. Wouldn't be as big. We only get, it'd be just normal fence. But that's something we could discuss.
And so I think I saw, was it the planning and zoning minutes or the memo recommendation by Park District? The Park District is saying if they do not receive a cash in lieu in this development, as they desire, they will have to implement special assessments. I presume they meant for the regional park that they have created uh for Rivers Edge segment. Is that, is that the understanding?
That would be correct. And that, that's one thing to, to think about is anytime that cash in lieu goes towards the Park District improvements. So anytime that that gets reduced, then that's their next funding mechanism to build those.
So, so not going with what the Park District has researched and, and requested for this uh development will increase special assessments for residents in the area?
I mean, it's, it's, it's an assumption to make. I, I guess I don't know what their overall funding plan is for that. But that is one of their options that they could use. I don't know their concrete plan for funding the regional park.
I just know that, I think that was the comment in the.
Yeah, I think they, they made a comment in an email or something related to that.
Oh, it was in, it was in an email. Yeah. And then it was also just said at the funding meeting. Um Park District voiced concerns about proposals to keep the land under private control and have viewed in a general sense that developers' proposal is bypassing the public land dedication and avoiding paying cash in lieu.
I guess our point is, okay, whoever did, and we know who did uh Rivers Edge master plan, um they're showing the property that we're currently trying to develop um in their master plan. No ca- there are no park dedication, noth- nothing on that. Well, eventually that's gonna be developed. And now it's, it's almost like they pushed it on to that property to pay for their park improvements now. Like that's how we kind of see it. Um and we would rather have a nice amenity in, in the land that we're developing that can connect to theirs. And that's kind of what we're trying to do. Um that's kind of how we see how when they did develop this master plan, they should have had maybe a better discussion on, okay.
Encourage you to have a conversation directly with Mr. Dabbert about that.
You know, so that, that's one thing that I think when this master plan was done, there could have been a little bit more discussion between the park and Dabbert and come to that everything can be handled in his own development. And then that's how you can make it more affordable for, and not kind of pushing it on to the next. That's the little bit of frustration that we have on this one.
Fair statement.
That's fair, yeah.
So.
Okay. All right, I guess we're leaving the public hearing open then?
Madam Chair, I would just ask if there's anyone else in attendance that wants to speak on this, that they should be able to probably speak on this.
Yeah, is there anyone that would like to have a conversation about this?
And one other comment that was brought up during the um, hey, Cameron, Jase, do you remember the um, the woman's name um that did bring up that she was supportive and she does?
It's here in the notes.
Okay, yeah. So um just wanted to point that out to that there was support of having additional green space.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so hearing that, um I guess we'll, do we need to make a motion to table?
Yes, you can make a motion to table to your, I'm assuming you want to do it to the next meeting or what's your?
Tell me you're back, yeah. We won't put a timeline on it at this point. We'll just keep in close communication with Mr. Mack and his associates. So at this point in time, looking for a motion to table the Westdale addition rezon ordinance and plat.
Sure.
I'll make that, I'll make that motion.
She can have it. I'll uh second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. We will revisit this down the road. Thank you for coming. And please let us know what you hear about the transmission easement. Thank you. Moving into item number twelve, Rivers Bend fourth addition. Mr. Hellman.
All right, Madam Chair, members of the council, uh this application for you.
I don't know, but I'm gonna get through this first.
Okay. Uh this application for you tonight is a plat and rezone uh for River Bend fourth addition. Uh the application is looking to re-subdivide a series of lots within River Bend uh and add additional property onto their property um for uh purchase from the diversion uh for that railroad right of way. Uh in addition, it seeks to rezon those portions of the rail line that are being divvied up to those property owners to match their existing zones. So they'll be able to combine um them with the plat. Uh if you notice on the plat in this one, there's quite a few signature lines with every individual owner of that property being added to that to sign. Uh Planning and Zoning Commission did review this one and had unanimous approval of that. Uh they did a conditional approval of that with the condition that all property owners must close on their respective pieces of the rail line and sign the proposed plat. Only at such time will the city's approval of the plat become effective. And that is because if one person does not and fails to sign the signature line of the plat, we cannot record it. Uh so this is a, a conditional approval on that. Uh relatively straightforward on this one. Uh been working with the diversion and their, their consultants A two S on this for some time. So if you guys have any questions for me, happy to answer them. If not, this is a public hearing, which again, both can be open. Uh and there are some representatives from the diversion uh here as well tonight, if you guys have any additional questions.
I think uh, I think we'll go ahead and do that. We'll open the public hearings for both the rezon ordinance and the plat. And uh is there anything that we need to know?
Good evening. Eric Dodds with A two S here to represent this item and I guess the next couple items as well. Um I think Jase did a great job summarizing. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
No, I thought it went uh fairly smooth at the Planning and Zoning Commissioners Meeting. Um I don't have any questions or concerns at this time.
Maybe one comment I might just add, uh the diversion authority also has an obligation to remove the ballast material. Uh the contractor for this section has been um given a notice to proceed and they've started to mobilize. So that work is starting as we speak.
Excellent. Any other questions?
Um I think my only question is there, there was a discussion of a timeline for getting signatures. Does that kind of relate to the property owners or are they aware of the timeline?
Yeah, great question. We've been trying to provide the property owners with updates every couple weeks or month, monthly basis. Um this area, the property owners have requested that they close after the ballast is removed, which we're anticipating to be done in the July-August timeframe.
Okay. I'm seeing that it looks like quitclaim deeds have been exercised. It looks like all the Ts have been crushed and Is have been dotted. I'll open it up to the public. Is there anyone that would like to make any additional comments about Rivers Bend fourth addition? Going once, going twice. Okay, hearing done. I'll be looking for uh approval of the rezon ordinance. Do you want to do these together or separate, Lucas?
You can. You can do them together or separate, and then you can also close the public hearing whenever you want to.
Okay. Um any preference, together or separate?
I'll make a motion to do them together.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing first. Uh so with that, the public hearing is closed. And Naomi's made a motion to repeat it again.
Um rezon and the plats for the Rivers Bend fourth addition.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Let's move into item thirteen. We'll get through uh the next two and then we'll go back to um tax equalization. Arrowhead fourth addition. Mr. Hellman.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council, uh this is very similar to the last application that we just did. And as I'm talking or after I'm been talking, basically, they are taking portions of the existing property, re-plating them and rezoning portions of the rail line uh to add to the adjacent property owners who are purchasing. This carried the exact same recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission with unanimous decision of a conditional approval. And again, that's for all property owners, uh must close on their respective pieces of rail line and sign the proposed plat. And then only at such time will that approval be effective. I will stand for any questions. And again, we can open a public hearing for both of these.
Let's do that. We'll open the public hearing for the rezon ordinance on Arrowhead fourth along with the plat. With that being said, we'll start if there's any questions from the front of the room, and then we'll move into general questions. Anything?
No, not for me. It's pretty much the same thing as the Rivers Bend. I, I have no questions.
Nothing. Okay. We'll open it up to the public. Uh any questions, comments, anything on the Arrowhead fourth addition proposal in front of us? Going once. Yes, sir. Please come on up to the podium, state your name.
Um Griffin Savageo. I'm a resident of Arrowhead, uh recently moved there. And no comment on this um project, but regarding the rest of the railroad leading towards downtown. Is there a plan for that um in the near future?
Not at this time.
Okay. Is there a way to recommend making it like public parks and a bike path?
Feel free to get in touch with Mr. Hellman at our offices.
Okay.
If you'd like, if you have ideas, if you have things that, I mean, we're always open, right?
Yeah, when we moved here first, we saw the railroad and thought it would be a great bike path. And then we heard about these two projects. Um and then we thought, you know, maybe the other one could be saved and made a park or something.
Yeah. Mr. Mr. Hellman in our office, would you take that call?
Absolutely.
And be able to give him some guidance on how to bring his ideas forward?
Yeah, and some of them talk about, because right now, they are still property of the diversion authority. So the city doesn't have ownership.
That's right.
We can definitely talk about master planning and, and any potential long-range projects that might be available. But right now, the fate of that is not necessarily in the city's hand.
And I think that's why Lucas is about to chime in.
Uh yeah, so that is exactly what I was gonna say. And also, the individuals that you need to talk to are sitting right there.
Okay. All right, that's all I had. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments on any of that regarding Arrowhead fourth? Okay, hearing none. We'll go ahead and move forward. I'll close the public hearing. And I'll be looking for a motion for approval on both the rezon and the plat on Arrowhead fourth.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. And one more here. Let's get into item fourteen, uh the FM diversion Stanley second edition. Uh Mr. Hellman, discussion on the plat.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the council, uh this is just a plat application uh before you tonight. Uh the diversion is going, currently going through and uh subdividing the boundary of the official channel for the plat, it's, or for the diversion channel itself. Um Planning and Zoning Commission did review this one and voted unanimously to recommend approval. Uh they did add a condition of roadways of one hundred and twelfth Avenue South and eighty-first Street South uh shall be connected by the diversion authority in the future. That is an ongoing conversation between staff and diversion staff on uh the layout of how that road will operate. But they have been working on uh doing some easement acquisition. Um so we, we should have a resolution for that here shortly as well. Uh but there is no development proposed with this application. They're simply plating the boundary of what the channel will end up being. Uh future plats we will see down the road. Uh we'll end up vacating right of ways, uh adding additional right of way that needs to be happening. Um and potentially rezoning the property uh into a more appropriate district than Ag, like Civic or uh Flood Plain, which was added with the new land use ordinance. So I don't have anything additional. Again, this is a, a confirmation of the boundary of the channel. And they'll be doing this in a series of sections. They've done some up north in the metro as well. And this is just part of, of the long process that is the diversion. So.
And we have, we have agreement here, I'm seeing, and I just want to make comment to it, that the roadways of one hundred and twelfth Avenue South and eighty-first Street South will be connected by the diversion authority in the future. Everybody's in agreement. Excellent. Okay, lovely. We'll go ahead, uh open up the public hearing on this one, and I'll open it up for questions.
No questions.
No questions.
No questions either.
Pretty straightforward. Anyone here that would like to ask any questions, make any recommendations, anything? Going once, going twice. Okay, gentlemen, any additional comments?
Again, Eric Dodds with A two S. Thanks for your time tonight. Um the only comment I would make is that there will likely be one other plat for the diversion channel that'll be coming forward to uh the city. We'll work with Jase. He's been great to work with. So it's probably a few months down the road, but just giving you a fair warning, I guess.
Okay.
Thank you.
Appreciate you, gentlemen, coming tonight. This uh is pretty cut and dried. We like it this way. With that being said, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And I'll be looking for a motion to approve the FM diversion Stanley second addition.
So moved.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Let's go ahead and now circle back to the tax equalization portion of this meeting. Line item number six. Welcome.
Madam Chair, members of the board, good evening and uh thank you for deferring this item. My name is Robert Wilson. I am the uh county administrator for Cass County. And uh our meeting was running a little late this afternoon, and I got down here as uh, as quickly as I could. Um I appreciate being able to appear before you for the uh tax equalization hearing. I, I will uh warn, warn you and, and ask for your uh forgiveness. I am not a tax equalization director. I do not play one on TV. Um we are in the uh process of transitioning within our equalization office. Our, our new tax equalization director, uh Matthew, uh Matthew Stanger uh is joining us this evening. This is his first day on the job. So he is uh, uh joining me and we are uh getting a good uh flavor of what these hearings entail. And uh in a number of weeks and months, we'll get him up to speed and we'll be lead, uh leading conversations moving forward. That said, I do have some information that I'm gonna run uh through with you this evening. Uh if we get to detailed follow-up questions, there's a good chance I'm gonna have to uh refer you back to our office. Uh we're, we're down in numbers within the office uh a little bit at the moment. Uh it does not mean we're, we're not gonna be very responsive to questions and, and comments that you had, have and follow-up information that you need. But there's a good chance that I'm gonna need to have you uh get my contact information from Brenton and, and forward those, those questions to me. So uh if, if, if we can start with those ground rules, I would very much appreciate uh getting into the conversation. And, and I will do my best uh to answer any questions that I can after I go through a little bit of the preliminary inver- uh information that I've uh shared at, at other township and, and city meetings over the course of this past month. Looking to again, go over some general information uh for Cass County. And then we will look at information uh specific to the city of Horus. Uh countywide, uh median sale prices uh last year uh was three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that does include uh the cities of West Fargo and Fargo. Uh on average, most properties saw roughly a three to four percent increase uh across, again, across all of the county. Uh average days on the market for a house is seventy-four days. Uh in previous year, uh the days on market average was fifty-six days. So there's a, obviously, a little bit of movement there. Um looking specifically at Horus, nine hundred and ninety-eight notices were sent out uh within Horus to receive a notice. A property needs to go up by ten. nine hundred and ninety-eight notices were sent out, uh, within Horace to receive a notice, a property needs to go up by ten percent and three thousand dollars. You can also receive a notice due to new construction, improvements made to property due to a permit being pulled, a split from a larger tract of land, expiration of a new home exemption and an adjustment in value due to changes in the market. Uh, up to this point, we've had nine people contact, uh, the equalization office, uh, prior to this meeting about their values. Uh, there were seventy-two sales that, that happened within Horace, uh, in twenty twenty-four that we are aware of. I have, uh, a, a number of copies of that packet, uh, we can take a look at, uh, at those sales that we're aware of if you're, you're interested. I, I'll leave, uh, leave as many copies as I've, uh, have if, uh, you'd like me to do that. Um, and, uh, you know, if they're, really the, what we're looking for, uh, tonight is to approve the, the valuations, uh, as, as a whole. Obviously, if anybody wishes to appeal, uh, value, uh, could need to, uh, make a record of that and, and that will be, um, followed up by our, uh, our equalization office, uh, and, uh, and we will follow through on that. The, um, if, uh, if the, the motion is approved as the values are current, currently listed, um, the total revenue from property taxes at the, the, the current, uh, at the general levy, uh, would, uh, would be two million eight hundred thirty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-four dollars. Uh, so that's, uh, um, that, those are, uh, the, the, that's the extent of my, my prepared remarks. I'd be happy to answer any questions that I, that I can, but, uh, again, just to bear in mind that if it's, uh, specific to evaluation or, or how, uh, the process moving forward or how a particular value was arrived at, I will most likely need to refer you back to our equalization office.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Wilson, I, I'm very accustomed to working with Mr. Fracassi, both Paul and Noel in the past, so we understand the challenges that you have, those are some, some big shoes to step into and
Indeed.
and certainly, certainly not the most famous of jobs, if you will, but, um, Mr. Stanger, are you here?
Uh, yeah.
Awesome, co- come on up and just introduce yourself so that everybody knows who you are and then we'll, uh, open it up and see if there's anyone here that is here for this reason, to appeal.
Uh, hi, I am, uh, Matthew Stanger, the new Director of Equalization for Cass County, um, and I will be attempting to fill those big shoes, um, but I am coming very fresh into the world of equalization and so this is going to be a, a significant learning curve for me right at the beginning, uh, especially today as my very first day on the job, so, um, thank you all for, you know, your patience with us, but, um, but yeah, I, uh, look forward to working with all of you in the future and, uh, hopefully, uh, not making, uh, too many upset folks.
Wonderful, we appreciate you coming tonight and I just wanted to let everyone put a face to the name so that we know who we'll be speaking with in future. Uh, with that said, I believe that we've been presented with, uh, a list of values, is there anyone here that is here to appeal their current value at this time? You mentioned there'd been nine calls already made?
Yes.
And you've been in touch with those individuals in process, correct?
Uh, the, the equalization office sent me with the, the list of, of folks who have contacted the office wanting to, to follow up and it will go straight back to the office first thing tomorrow morning so they can, uh, continue that process.
Okay, and so with that said then, we're looking at approval for the remainder of the list that is not currently under appeal?
Correct, we're looking for your, uh, uh, approval of the, uh, the valuations.
Okay, any questions, comments, concerns on the valuations here?
I just have one question, just like for comparative value, you indicated what the total revenue of property taxes is. Uh, do you, do you have any interest or it wasn't a year prior?
I do, I've got a, a number of different, uh, groupings of, uh, um, uh, valuations from the twenty twenty-four certified as, as well as the twenty twenty-five and, uh, um, as, as I was just sitting here waiting for this item to, to, uh, be, uh, uh, to come up, was, was looking at it and, you know, it's, uh, I, I will say it's, uh, it's, it's signa- it's eye popping. Uh, it, the, the total, uh, true and full value, um, is up two hundred million dollars. And the, uh, the total assessed value is up, um, a hundred million sixty-seven thousand one hundred dollars. So, uh, I, you know, this, Horace is, is absolutely, uh, recognized, uh, across the state as the absolute area that is the, the epicenter of growth, there's no, no question whatsoever about that.
Okay, thank you, Breton, did you need a copy of that list?
Um, it probably wouldn't hurt. It wouldn't hurt just for, to include minute wise, so if you, you could just email it to me, that would work probably, or I could take a copy here, whatever you prefer.
You know, I would, I would probably, the fact sheet of, of the actual values, I'll, I'll leave that with you, so you can probably easier for me to just leave that and we can print another copy.
Okay.
And so our action tonight is to approve all even the properties that have an appealing place, or what is, what are our steps to make?
I don't have a recommended motion in front of me, I don't know if, uh, we are looking for you to, um, approve, uh, approve the values as, as they have been, uh, been set to, uh, to this point, I.
Basically, you're focusing on just the property value here, it's not saying how much a property would be taxed at. Uh, also during this legislative session, just so you know, and I don't wanna mix up valuation versus how much somebody would be paying in their property taxes, but, um, the three main property tax bills all have some form of capping of property taxes.
Yep.
Uh, roughly, or what I've heard discussion for quite a while has been three percent. Uh, throw out different ideas to legislators, but they're pretty hard and fast on that three percent. Um, if it's hospital eleven seventy-six, for example, it's on three percent increase from the total dollars levied of the previous year, plus the new growth, so we're able to account for that new growth to come online, but then it's three percent cap outside of that new growth, so we have to, once we find out from legislators how that impacts us, then we'll know more, um, how much our mills will be, how much is levied, we're going through a budget process. But just so you know, for tonight, it's focusing just on the property values, so it will get a little trickier as we go through later this year.
It'll be interesting to see what happens there, I know the last several years have been pretty consistent with three to four percent and I know we had a rather large equalization. Um, when I first started, my very first year on this council, I'll never forget that meeting, I had over two hundred people in another room. Uh, it was very challenging, so I, I'm looking forward to seeing more discussion on a cap and what keeps things at a reasonable level. But with that said, uh, in the interest of keeping things moving tonight, I'd be looking for a motion to approve the proposed valuations.
And so the properties that have reached out to, to further discussion?
Yep.
Um, and I would mean to the labor, but what hap- what happens then in regard to our actions tonight?
They still stay open?
So, so, uh, to answer the question, it, it is, the motion is just to approve as presented today with the understanding that the property owners that appealed still have an opportunity to meet with representatives from the county and ultimately the county, uh, commission ends up approving as the final approving authority on these lists. So it, it is essentially just, part of the process for the council has to approve it. Those appeals stay, uh, and, and those property owners are allowed that opportunity to meet with, um, with whoever from the office. Typically, what Mr. Fracassi did was he would have back, uh, backroom meetings with property owners to discuss, um, what their, their issues were or just to get a better understanding and if they couldn't do it then, uh, they would set, uh, schedule meetings at his office for, for them to meet with him and, and discuss those, so.
It's actually a fairly robust process, I've been through it. It was good, so.
They actually do go through another level on top of what Lucas mentioned.
Yep.
So, city approves, then county, they take their action on it and then it also goes to the state. So there are three levels of appeal processes for property owners, so s- local, state, or local county and then state.
I'm pleased to hear that residents do have a, a channel to be heard on this, they're unhappy with their valuations.
Any other questions?
I have no further questions, thank you.
Absolutely.
Okay, hearing none, looking for a motion.
I'll make that motion.
And a second? I need.
Do you need to say it or is it?
Motion approving the proposed valuations.
Okay, the proposed valuations.
Yep, and I'll be looking for a second as well.
I'll second.
Thank you kindly, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, anything else that's needed on that, Lucas?
No.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Wilson, appreciate you coming and welcome aboard, Mr. Stanger, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to item number fifteen, Water Sewer Storm and Street Improvement District number twenty twenty-five dash three, this is the Oak Valley Edition, Mr. Dahlman.
Correct, Madam Chair, what we have tonight is the preliminary engineering report for the Oak Valley Edition.
Excuse me, sir, I'll have you take that in a back room while we're talking, thank you.
So we have the preliminary engineering report for Water Sewer Storm and Street Improvement District number twenty twenty-five dash three, the Oak Valley Edition. Um, this is a local improvement subdivision as proposed. It consists of just, um, a residential subdivision with water sewer, curb and gutter streets, storm sewer and that type of work. There are no regional improvements, there is a portion of seventy-fourth Street off of one hundredth Avenue that is classified as a functional, there's a function classified street, but the developer is keeping a portion of that as a local improvement to not assess out the larger area, but would do so in a future phase when they are, um, looking at developing further south from where they are, so. Um, with that being said, we have the existing conditions, it's an agricultural field right now, used for, used for egg. We have the planning guidance off of the comp plan and, um, the, uh, special assessment policy we use as guidance for the costs. The improvements are twelve inch centers, two remains, six inch, four inch services and manholes, twelve inch, eight inch and six inch water mains and one inch services and fittings, hydrants and piping, storms, two remains, laterals, catch spaces, manholes, stormwater ponds and, uh, asphalt streets. Uh, we are proposing to do the collector's street as concrete. Um, the developer did request that we bid a asphalt alternative to that. Uh, we have it listed in the report, it doesn't offer much of a cost savings, but I wanted to bring it forward to you guys and bring it to your attention, as to what their, their request was, there has been some value engineering done with the developer as to location of some water lines and things. This is in the Cassboro Water Users District, so, um, it's up to them to make those decisions and they did get back that they were all right with the proposed changes as far as routing the water main through the subdivision rather down than down a, um, down seventy-fourth that collector.
They're okay with going through the subdivision?
Yes.
How will that impact if maintenance has to be done at a later date?
So it's in Cassero's territory, the city doesn't have a lot of say and it's, it's, it's up on them, so it's really no different than going down the other one, it's just
Okay.
There's less piping and, and a lot of the cost, so, um, let's see here, we've got, like I said, we've got the sewer, the water. Um, in your, in your report, we have the location map, the district boundary map, opinion of probable costs, typical sections, sanitary sewer flows is provided by the developer, Oak Valley plat, petition for improvements and then our preliminary assessments. So, the opinion of project cost is a little over seven point two million dollars. That is broken down as preliminary policy as best we can with a proposed, um, area. We don't have approved plats at the moment yet, so we're, we're working on information that we have, um, to provide those preliminary estimates for that. So, um, you will see the engineer's report in here was provided by the developer's engineer and reviewed by our office. We added the appropriate soft cost to that for the city doing the work. And then we also have in the last couple pages there, get to it, we have, uh, our methodology as far as how it was being calculated. You'll see it's, uh, one each and then we have our typical three units per acre with a load factor of three on the area that is commercial as per the modifications to the policy, special assessment policy. And then we have a two load factor for the proposed park area that is in green on that map. The blue area is ponds, stormwater ponds, water retention, three units per acre at two, a two load factor. Um, you, I think you will see some discussion coming forward out of this year's special assessments as to how to treat stormwater ponds. But, uh, for this purpose, we included them and kept them, kept them in, um, in with the development, so. As you'll see here, we have two versions, or not two versions, but two assessments, one is for the regional improvements and then the second one is for the local improvements, so. The only part of the regional is still on Willow, or on Oak Valley, it's not over into anywhere else. And then the local is just on the locals too, so.
So the la- the last map is, the, is the local? And the, the map, the first map is regional, I was confused because it didn't say on the last map?
Sure.
You know what I mean?
Yep.
Okay, so the very last map is the local?
And the second to last map is the regional?
So you're saying that the regional map and the local map, these are both in play in this development? Not like a different calculation between the two?
Yeah, one is equivalent units and, and density, the other is like front foot each area.
But that's what I mean, is it, are, are we looking at, one is a regional assessment and one is a local assessment? Cause they, they're vastly different numbers.
Yes, they are.
They'll be added together.
And they're supposed to be that way.
They're gonna be added together?
That's correct.
So these, these parcels will have the estimated numbers on both of these maps assigned to their property?
Correct.
Combined, okay.
Well, I guess the first comment that I would make, I don't mean to speak out of turn, is we're calling this a local improvement, uh, but we have uh, land in this district that is not part of this development, the NACET property.
There's one.
What?
There's just the one, yep.
Then they have the two parcels, I mean, I guess, I'm, if I'm being honest, I thought it was a map that showed one calculation or another, I, I can't even fathom, if I'm being honest, assessing properties that aren't in this development, three, four, five, six, seven, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
So this is
A complete deal breaker.
This is purely a preliminary estimate, there's no input from the special assessment commission, there's no, I mean, we can go back and rework it and put zero on there if you want.
I, I would never move forward, I don't, I don't know if anyone else, I would literally never move forward even on a preliminary basis. I'm sorry to be so blunt, but that, that's ridiculous. I mean, if you wanna take the NACET property out of the district, I guess we can look at it, but
You, you tell me to do that, we will.
Because what, what, what benefits are they driving? When we say it's a local district, is it storm water or?
There's storm water, there's water, there's sewer and there's access from the south by a street.
And these are all things that our special assessment commission will notate and will take out. That's why we have them do this.
Imagine sending the NACET the letter that says, we're gonna put you on the hook for seven hundred thousand, you're just, you're forcing them to sell? Or you're drag, you're forcing them to develop against the timeline? I have no idea, I don't even, I've never personally met the NACET, but, um, it's a, it's a deal breaker right over the age for me.
Yeah, these are preliminary, so.
Well, how often are your preliminary estimates off though?
We work with estimated numbers to give you guys an idea of what it could be when the time comes. We try to estimate to the point where we can build the project and not too little to not be able to construct the project.
So what they, what they do is he puts together a map here and he uses the overall cost and then they divvy it up. Now, how we divvy it up, we have a methodology for. However, the special assessment commission, when they go in, takes into account, these are existing people, how much benefit. They, they ask all of those questions and they go through a fairly calculated process.
I understand that process, but I guess for me, I'm not willing to even talk about this until we have our workshop. I am not moving forward on anything because I personally feel, and I'm sorry, Lucas, I know that we have other things happening that you don't wanna discuss right now, but I don't feel comfortable moving forward on anything cost-wise and just saying, special assessment committee can deal with this, that's not how I feel, I don't think it's appropriate right now. And I would like to come up with a plan as a council to figure out how we are going to address these high costs. I know we have inflation, things cost a lot of money, things are out of control with what things cost to build and that is not our fault by any means, but I am not okay right now with, um, just saying, yep, we're "Yep, we're gonna bond everything." I'm not okay with it. That's where I stand, and I'm not in favor of moving forward.
And I thought, I thought the engine report, I guess I may have misunderstood it, was a discussion that the regional portion was gonna happen in the future, but there's, there's the two maps.
There's more regional to come, because this is only the intersection of One Hundred and Fourth and the intersection of One Hundredth down to One Hundred and First Avenue. So if you look at the, the last map there, the gray area will not be, is not being proposed to be constructed.
That's another regional.
It's a future district.
And so it would be in that district, same district?
So it would still, the policy would apply for that because it is
Yep.
Collector Road, so it'd be halfway to the nearest arterial, east and west.
So it would basically be double the regional. It's about, if I'm just eyeing the map, the road.
When you say double the region, you're talking?
A hundred, from One Hundredth down to One Hundred and Second, I'm just looking at the distance. And then we're gonna do about the same distance from One Hundred and Second down south to the, to the southern end of the district, right?
You're talking east-west or north-south?
North-south, I'm sorry.
Okay, so north-south, the top would be One Hundred and, One Hundredth Avenue would be the north.
One Hundred and Second.
And then depending upon how far south, we've done the districts so that as far as the road is improved, that's where the district stops. So if it were to One Hundred and Fourth, we'd stop there. If it was to One Hundred and Twelfth, we'd stop there.
But what you've estimated for cost is basically a hundred, Hundredth to One Hundred and Second.
Hundredth to One Hundred and First, and then the One Hundred and Fourth intersection.
Oh, I'm sorry. A hundred to One Hundred and First is the first portion, and then, and then the other part.
The intersection at One Hundred and Fourth, yep.
And the regional map itself is most particularly just that Collector Road, correct?
It is, yes.
So I mean, the amount to do for A Hundred and First all the way down would be exponentially higher than a hundred-and-fifty-thousand, I was speaking on the NACET property.
Right.
I mean, I, so with these numbers, when we talk about adding these properties that are not part of the development, are the numbers parsed out when you say they're getting a little bit of storm water or what have you? They're not, you know, and if it's a, so do these numbers reflect just that, or did you just take the total amount of the local district and just apply our policy?
So it's, it's broken out by the policy. It's not just some random number that's divided out by area?
I know, I know. I guess what I'm saying is, but these properties are unique because they're not just a three each for the total. They are, they're not, in the local district, they're not. They shouldn't pay for a share of the sewer and the local roads that the rest of the development are paying. And I think we need to be, I, I don't know how we would do it, but I think we need to be more cognizant on the front end about the letters we're sending out to residents as well when we're roping other parcels into the district. So I also don't feel comfortable moving forward. This is a regional, and I also think we need to understand what the legislature's gonna be doing to us for our, for our budgets. We need to understand what our budgets are, because we try to provide a twenty-five percent contribution into regionals. And if we have concern about, if we have concern about what our budget's gonna look like going forward, I think we need to take a strong step back, because we have a lot of projects that we are committing a forty-five percent regional contribution on. I want to make sure that that's something that we can handle.
Hundred percent, hundred percent. I agree.
I support my council members with taking a little pause here, especially just with the climate. Residents are speaking out against how we put funding projects, and I think just reassessing, examining how we're doing, that if we owe that to the residents and think about it and reassess our mechanisms for funding these huge projects.
Yeah, so, so Jim's job with this obviously is, as the engineer, to present the numbers to the council. Council ultimately gives direction to its staff and consultants on how you'd like to proceed with these projects. So if the desire of the council is to table this matter, that's fine. It just requires a motion of the council to do so. Again, staff and consultants just provide the information to the council, and council ultimately can decide how it wants to proceed with these. And so if this is something where the council just needs additional time to think, I think that is completely fine for the council to make a motion to table this matter so we can look further into the numbers, provide additional information to the council in making an informed decision on how we'd like to proceed with this, and that would be my recommendation, Madam Chair, to proceed with this, this action. But essentially, we just need to know what the desire is of the council.
Right, and I, I share the sentiment, you know. We're all here, none of us likes to divvy up specials. We're, we're all, you know, in a position here, and we have been for some time, where the costs are going up. It just is what it is. So I will remind each and every person on this council that we were a part of putting the current policy in place, and if you don't like it, we need to change it. So I appreciate the pause. Let's go ahead and move forward with a motion to.
I will just say, sir, it's not really exactly how the policy is laid out, I guess, as far as figuring out the number, where the numbers go. For me, it's, do we really want to be, how, how are we bonding, right? Temporary bonding versus?
We can certainly have those discussions.
We can have those discussions in our workshop.
I just want to make sure that you understand that I'm not, it's not necessarily how the numbers are concluded. It's what we're gonna do to try to keep the costs down moving forward, and if that means developers start putting a little bit of skin in the game, that's how I feel.
Well said. Thank you. Okay, with that, I'm looking for a motion to table item fifteen, Water Sewer Storm and Street Improvement District, number twenty-two-five-three.
I'll make that motion.
And I'm looking for a second?
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion declines. Moving into item number sixteen, Mr. Dolman.
All right, Madam Chair. The number sixteen is a draft preliminary engineering report being distributed for your review tonight. This is for Luther Avenue. Luther Avenue is the collector south of Eighth, north of County Road Fourteen. The project boundaries are from County Road Seventeen through the Drain Twenty-seven, approximately that area. It is the construction of a residential collector street. It's the same thing. We talk about the existing conditions, which are currently ag, and then it would be, we have planning guidance in here from Horace for twenty-four-five. We have the proposed improvements. The areas that are highlighted in yours, in your report are things that I had our staff highlight just to kind of give you an idea of some of the things to look at when you're looking through it, since this is only being submitted for your review. This is a project that does have properties that are not a hundred percent developer-owned, so this would go through the public input process to gather the input of those. So this is, like I said, just being sent for your review, and then we'll come back and, come back after we get some more direction from you as far as what we want to show for special assess, preliminary special assessments, and then once we get through the public information meeting. So I guess my question to you is regarding the public information meetings. We have in the past, we've, we've done the reports. We've presented them to you for review. We've taken the numbers that were in those. We've sent out letters. We've conducted one public input meeting to date as far as those projects are concerned. If there's some concern from, from the council as to numbers in that preliminary letter or a preliminary estimate, is there anything you'd like to see differently? Do you want us to not go forward with the public input until we've got some more direction from, from, from you guys, from your council, or what is your thoughts on, on this? I don't want to, you to think that I'm trying to push you to keep moving forward, but I just don't want it to, to be stagnant.
Right. I, I appreciate that sentiment. So we have this now. I would encourage each and every person to review it and put some time and effort into those thoughts. You, you mentioned some things here that I think we as a council want to address, and I think it would make sense to give that feedback to all of our staff and support services. So I don't think we need to open this up for questions at this time. It's simply for review, and we'll go ahead and move forward.
Yep.
Was there any action needed on this?
No, there's no action. No action. It's just presented to you just to formally get it in front of you so that we, you've acknowledged that you've, you've got it. And then as far as the public input meeting is concerned, I'm just gonna school on that for, until we have a discussion. Is that kind of the sentiment, or?
I think it would be wise to have some additional discussion based on what we've seen here tonight and, and some of the feeling that I think a lot of people in our community have to regroup and to put a pause on that until we have an opportunity to really dive into it a little further. I hope, I'm speaking for all of us when I say this.
Yes.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay, good.
My, my only question that initiated the time is, with the, with the maps that are provided with the estimated numbers, does that, do the numbers include driver? I mean, I'm just curious.
I gotta find, I gotta find out. I, I want to say that it does, but I will put that on, I will find out.
I was just curious.
Because the driver is assigned by the Special Assessment Commission.
Right.
So there are times where our staff will not put it in there because of the fact that it is Special Assessment Commission telling direct, direction to do that. But I want to say we did, but I will follow up and see, because I don't, I don't see that on here, and I am gapping it out if it was. Between the three of them here, I kind of got them all mixed up.
Jim, if you want to look into that, maybe get back to separately.
I certainly will.
Separately, that'd be great.
Yep.
And then, and then just one final question. Do the maps with varying numbers, are they different? Could you just speak to the three maps? Are they different calculations?
No, so what the, there's the, the first one is the number of equivalent units, because the regional improvements are typically done by number of equivalent units. So you'll see that one each, or the various way of breaking that down. And then the second map is the regional street amount of that portion of the project, and then the last map is the total, total amount. So that's got the regional, I believe, included into it. I will double check on that because I'm starting to question myself as to how we, how we put that together. So I think that the last one is just the total dollar amount. The first one is just the regional portion of it. So you'll see there's two thousand dollars, and then the next one is three thousand dollars, so.
Luther itself is a regional, you're a regional district.
Yep.
Okay, I just was confused about the different numbers on the.
Me too.
So there are some parcels along the east side that have access off of Luther, and I want to say that that's part of it, but I'll verify that and get, and put that on my list to verify too.
But for Oak Valley, it was, they were separate amounts that were going to be combined, but for these?
I'm second guessing myself. I think the second one might have been the total.
Yeah, I'm curious.
I think it is. I'll double check that.
I'm imagining that they would be similar. It's not, not similar values, but they could have combined it, like the second one on both.
Gotcha, yep. That's why I started second guessing myself as I said it.
Awesome. We'll go ahead and confirm. Were there any other questions?
No, thank you.
Okay, awesome. We'll move forward then into item seventeen. I'm assuming this is similar.
It is, yeah. So this is talking about Sparks, Sparks Edition, and this includes the Eighth Avenue stuff, and it also includes the area along what was referred to as the racetrack along the south side there.
Right.
We had talked with the developer in that area about, you know, like what the scope of the project is, because it's a rather large area for development. So you'll see in here that we, it's kind of, there was a lot of effort put in to try and get as much of the scoping and as much of the actual improvements. And you can see on the tenth page of it, there's, it, it gets to be quite a bit going on in there. So this has got the same thing. We've broken out the estimate, and we've got petition for improvements, and then we get to the end of the mapping. We've got a concept map, a couple of those. And then this one's got quite a bit in here with the agreements that have been talked about and the plats. So same thing, take it, review it, provide some comments. This one will also have to go for public input because Eighth is, is a, has a benefiting area that is outside of a developer controlled. So we'll have to go through a public input meeting on that one too, when the, when the time comes or when you're comfortable with what we're distributing, so.
Wonderful. Okay, great information. Thanks for getting this in front of us. It gives us a chance to, you know, dive into it, digest it, get some feedback before it goes to public hearing. Appreciate that, Jim. Okay, number eighteen, Rivers Edge Second. I, I see that we were going to table this until the May fifth meeting?
Yes, so the developer requested an additional two weeks.
Okay, so no issues there. You don't need any additional motions or anything. Okay.
No, the reason it's on there is because the council's motion was to bring it back to this meeting, but the developer's not ready yet, so.
Okay, perfect. We'll move right into item nineteen, the Engineering and Public Works Report. Jim?
All right, council. Just a couple of things tonight. Current construction is starting to kick off. Worked for about half a week last week up in Deer Creek Second Edition. They're getting moving on that. Electrical contractors are getting in, putting in streetlights on Sixty-sixth and Sixty-fourth and Rivers Edge First Edition, and we've got contracts out for, we had a pre-construction conference last week for our final overlays of the Cub Creek Edition, Lakeview Edition, and the Maple Lake Estates Edition. They're gonna start those sewers and layers, what they're thinking, probably the middle of May when it came to that. We have not had any pre-construction conferences yet on the Chestnut Additional Inlets or the Adelman Drainage. Those are two that contracts have been issued, and those proceeds have been issued. If you remember, we did those late last year, so I've been asking our project manager at the beginning of the week if he's heard anything from the contractor about starting those, and hasn't heard anything yet, so we'll keep going on that. Valley Grading has the contracts for Lost River Slow Prepare. We haven't got them back yet from them, but we just issued the notice to proceed, I think it was a couple of weeks ago. So we're waiting for those to come back. Deer Creek, like I said, second and third edition. They're working on the storm sewer on that, streetlights on Sixty-fourth. And then we've just been putting together a lot of preliminary engineering reports and spending an awful lot of time on special assessments, trying to get those as close to accurate as we can, can with a preliminary status of an estimate. So we've been doing a lot of that. There will be patching, street patching. That was part of our final pavement lift project, and that'll be kind of, it may not happen right away, but it, it will happen sooner than later. And it just depended upon how they were gonna shake out the crew of border states paving. We did bring up traffic control at the
Thank you.
Preliminary, preliminary, or at the pre-construction conference. So we've got that, and then just keep pushing on. So special assessments with seven projects, like we levy the assessments for, they're gonna be, they're gonna be a hot topic here for a while, pushing through all those. So seven projects is a lot to assess.
It is. Okay, anything else?
Nope, any questions?
No, thank you.
Awesome. We'll move right into City Administrator Report. Mr. Holper.
Okay, the first one, you mentioned already a little bit. I'll be reaching out to each council member and mayor to figure out availability for a workshop to talk about how we fund projects, developments, different things like that. That'll likely be next month. So please look at your calendars and start, let me know what your availability is, but I'll be touching base with each of you on that. Then the other one, Councilor Berklin, you asked about Senate Bill Twenty-two, Twenty-five. I'm looking into it more. Looking at bills changed a lot, even today. So I'm looking into that one more, and I've asked League of Cities about it a little bit, so.
Yeah, I think I sent it to you and Lucas.
Yep, so I reached out to them. Senate Bill Twenty-two, Twenty-five, and it's, from what I could get from it, it's pretty, there's a lot undefined que, or I have a lot of questions to add to it of, is to help with infrastructure funding for affordable housing. I think that'd be a very helpful thing to have. However, there's a lot of just questions I would have, like how would this work? How would they?
How do we get the funds?
How, what's the limit for, say, like Horace, they have a cap for if a city is over twenty thousand people? So there's just a lot of question marks there. So I, like I said, I did reach out to League, and I'll follow up with them some more and see what we can find out.
Thank you.
So it's a, it wasn't one that was really pushed real hard at League. The cities, I think there was a lot of responses, but during their updates, I didn't hear much on this one. So anyways, we'll look into it more. There's a lot of flux going on out in Bismarck on various different bills. Property tax is one of them. But this is also a time where you'll see a lot of things get added into bills, and then more discussion happening, and it's like, almost like bargaining back and forth with legislators of what makes it, what doesn't. So there's a lot of changes going on to these bills that haven't been approved by both House and Senate. Appropriations also has a big influence on that. So if it creates like a funding program or not, that influences it. The last one I had is House Bill Fifteen-seventy-five, I believe. That's the, that's the wastewater one, right?
Yes.
Yep, so that one is looking like it's moving forward, at least last I've heard. So that is good. It looked like it was gonna get dropped or not get funded. It's looking more optimistic now. It looked like it was gonna get dropped or not get funded, it's looking more optimistic now, which would create a grant program for wastewater Projects, which the state does not typically fund a grant program for right now, um, so Any little bit to get, create that structure would be helpful, so. Um, last item I had was just, um, The weekend before last, we had our Easter egg hunt, I'm sure you'll, we talked about a little bit here, but, uh, Easter egg hunt, we had a fairly good turnout, I don't know if, Paul, if you had an estimate how many people, it was a little more than last year, I believe. Uh, pretty good turnout, weather cooperated, uh, we did fifty-two thousand eggs, I believe, it's a lot, but we have a lot of sponsors that help us make that happen. Uh, so we do appreciate their help, uh, even when it came down to stuffing eggs, we had volunteers helping out with that too, and that helped. So, anyways, uh, we do appreciate, uh, Southern Valley Fire, they showed up, Sheriff's Office, they showed up. And then, uh, Blue Cross for Shield, they helped with stuffing eggs too, so we appreciate that, and then also Horace Luther and Church for Uh, letting us use the facility, they had a pretty good turnout of kids and folks coming into the church too, they had a bake sale. What I heard from Pastor Will was they had, they did very well for their bake sale, uh, helped for fundraising for them, so, um, it's good news, so. That's all I had.
Wonderful, okay. We'll move right into, uh, portfolio reports. Uh, Mayor Trudeau is on vacation, so we'll look forward to hearing what he has to say when he gets back. Um, with construction halting and just starting to get kicked off, we haven't gotten into the meat and potatoes quite yet. Uh, just a couple of questions, I, I got around when I got back to town, cause you all heard I had to be out of town last week. Um, any updates on road restrictions?
Haven't heard anything.
Nothing, I haven't heard anything either. Um, street sweeping, where's that at on our radar? That's a Brenton question.
Our public work staff is out there street sweeping as they are available.
Okay.
So, it's, we're short staff right now, so.
I realize that. If we need to look at a third party, let's do it, um, we need to make sure that our streets get cleaned up, because they're a little ugly right now. And with, um, motorcycles and bikes and whatnot getting present and, and people walking, I don't want people falling on gravel and breaking hips or, you know, Kids on bike scrapings, so anything we can do to help that would be awesome. Other than that, it's just streetlights and, and, uh, Sewer work going on right now, so I'll go ahead and pass it on over to Councilmember Berkland.
All right, thank you, Councilmember White, um, I, for my portfolio, we had a workshop at the last planning and zoning meeting. Um, and at that time, the commissioners went over County Road, the corner of County Road fourteen and County Road seventeen for the future land use map. Um, it was a really good discussion, they worked very, very hard, um, very proud of the work that they're doing to try to Um, take into consideration what the residents are, you know, wanting for the community, um, so we are actively working on that. Um, let's see, with, with that, um, that discussion Did have reducing the footprint of proposed mixed use and commercial and maintaining a suburban transition to buffer that adjacent property. Um, there were a few residents that were in attendance there, um, they of course didn't participate. We will have our public hearings for those, Jace, the, do we have dates for those? I can't do the math in my head for dates. Legally, we have to put them and notice them and put them in the papers, so.
Yep.
Uh, tentatively, that would be May thirteenth.
All right, so.
With Planning and Zoning Commission.
Yep, with the planning and zoning, at that time, residents can sure come and, um, voice their opinions or However they're feeling about, um, those changes. Um, you can also Send over comments to Jace at the city as well, and he'd be happy to incorporate that into the presentation, um, for those commissioners. And then of course, um, at the next meeting, which would be tomorrow, um, Planning and Zoning is meeting tomorrow, we're gonna have another workshop Um, again revolving around the future land use map, right? And we're gonna be talking about the seventeen seventy-six small area plan and how the ordinances are, um, Gonna be implemented, um, making some changes that better suit the, the feel that the residents have been really desiring, um, When we look at all of the data that the residents have given us with even the, um, Downtown neighborhood study, there was a lot of feedback with that, um, and even the comp plan itself, um, had a lot of feedback that I feel like Wasn't really taken into consideration, unfortunately, so, um, we're gonna be taking a look at that at the next planning and zoning meeting. Did I miss anything?
No, the, the only thing I would add to that, so, we'll, we're kinda doing a, a presentation on the seventeen seventy-six district to begin with, because I don't know If anyone fully understands how it's related in the comp plan to how it's realized in the ordinance. So we'll at least give that baseline foundation of understanding, and then we'll probably decide on what the next steps of that further conversation. We are also going to be taking a look at individual zoning districts and sections of the new land use ordinance and kind of looking on where some Changes can make to really kind of address that small town feel concern that people have, and a lot of that's gonna be based in scale. And, and kinda readdressing how that, so tomorrow night, we actually will be reviewing the mixed use, uh, zoning district classification and kind of working through any potential changes through that. And so on top of future lands maps, this body will start to see probably pieces of the ordinance that will be working its way through, uh, to, I don't wanna say fix, but amend portions.
Yeah.
And, and kinda redirect The type of development that we're looking at.
Yes, I mean, it's very important that the commissioners are listening to the residents and their, you know, the desires to To fix the things that, um, are causing a little bit of heartburn. And then, um, let's see. My daughter's gonna be having surgery, so I will be, I think I'm here for one more meeting. Just trying to look at the calendar, if anybody needs to get ahold of me, I'm probably gonna be out after that, um, Second weekend of May, second week of May, but otherwise, I don't know, Ron, did I miss anything? Okay.
God's blessings to you and your daughter, Naomi.
Yes, thank you.
Wishes for a speedy recovery.
Thank you.
Um, we'll move ahead right in with, uh, Stephanie, Councilmember Landstrom.
Thank you, um, I don't have too much, I thought I would just give a slight update. Um, we had a MetroCob Policy Board meeting last week, um, and there, in some of the, uh, documents, there were some status reports of different projects that they're working on. Um, and they did, they did have a brief comment on the West Central Perimeter Highway Study that, uh, we have Uh, had presented to us here in Horace and conversation. Um, I didn't get a chance to reach out to anybody, but the comment In the update was that MetroCob desires a change in direction regarding this project, to consider feedback received from Horace. The project manager, we have with the consultants to talk about this new direction for the study, the study is currently on hold. While the new direction for the scope of work is worked out with the consultant, so I decided we have a little refletting on that. Uh, it looks like it's essentially on hold right now, I don't quite know what that means, but, um, it looks like they're at least taking, um, some of our comments into Into, uh, consideration hopefully, and that, that's all that I have.
I don't have much either, I, I wasn't at, um, well, Park Board hasn't met since we've met last, and, um, I guess Brenton already talked about the egg hunts, um, and then Paul has started the The ball rolling on talking about the upcoming bean days, we're meeting next week about that, um, to get some things ironed out, and so I don't have anything else. I really appreciate you guys meeting, you know, Naomi, about, um, These different neighborhoods, it seems like you guys are, the ball's moving really quickly, attacking multiple areas, just to really reexamine and Follow up with the residents they're asking for, I'm super impressed with you guys' tenacity there.
Yeah, I was maybe a little bit pushy at the last meeting, but it was a good meeting, it was a good.
Awesome. I, uh, I do wanna thank everyone for the hard effort that they put in to ensure our kiddos Had a nothing less than spectacular Easter egg hunt, I thought that was awesome. I love seeing the coordination with the church and the city and all the different entities and people that helps, so, really proud to be a part of that. I unfortunately, uh, had to miss it this year, first year, and I was pretty bummed, so, I wanna thank you all for your hard work with that. Uh, with that being said, I'll be looking for a motion to adjourn.
That's my cue, so moved.
And a second, all in.